All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the November 17th, 2014 City of Stillwater City Council Meeting. We're going to call the meeting to order. And first on our agenda is, we are honored today to have Greta Kornforth lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Greta?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wonderful. Thank you. May be seated. Greta, how are you?
Good. How are you?
I'm doing wonderful. Step on up towards that microphone a little bit. All right. For full disclosure, I've known Greta since you were about that tall. So, full disclosure there. So, this, some of these questions you might think are a little silly, but I don't know all the kids that get to come. So, what school do you go to and what grade are you in?
I'm in fifth grade and I go to Sanger Ridge.
You go to Sanger Ridge, fifth grade. And who's your teacher?
Mr. Rigs.
Mr. Bays?
Rigs.
Rigs, okay. And what's your favorite subject?
Math.
Math, okay. What's your least favorite subject?
Science.
Science? Wow, that's kind of interesting. Math and science usually go together a lot. So, what do you like to do when you're not at school?
I play tennis.
Play tennis? You do a lot more than that.
I play the piano.
Yep, you do. You do. All right. She told me I couldn't ask about a boyfriend or not, so do you guys have any other questions, because I'm all out?
Do you have a boyfriend?
Oh, you don't have to answer that. All right. Well, Greta, thank you very much. You did a wonderful job. And I've got a little something for you. Just run down there. That's going to take us down to the consent docket, and we have items A through F on the consent docket. Do any councilors wish to remove anything from the consent docket?
No.
No, sir.
Much to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent docket. And that is approved five to zero. That's going to take us down. We have several requests to speak for items that are not scheduled for public hearing. Our first request is from Randy Eldavick.
Hi, I'm Randy Eldavick. I live at 516 South Walnut in Stillwater. I have been hearing about some proposed city rules against smoking tobacco in public. I'm all for that, and I think the rules should be as stringent as possible. And I would like to go beyond what's actually being proposed. In fact, what's being proposed seems to be a resolution rather than an ordinance. The trouble with resolutions is that they have no teeth in them. Ordinance is due. An ordinance could do a lot more to prevent smokers from poisoning the air that other people have to breathe. And that's the very simple reason why smoking in public should be prohibited, because it not only harms the smokers themselves, but it harms other people who are forced to be nearby them. Both of my grandfathers were chain smokers. Both of my grandfathers died of lung cancer. I'm sure they harmed the lungs of the people around them, too. I myself find it absolutely unbearable to be around tobacco smoke, not only because I know it's unhealthy, but because it's so terribly, terribly unpleasant. If these new proposals only go so far as a resolution, and if they're restricted to certain parts of city parks, that, I suppose, would be a first step, but I would rather see something much more extensive. And in particular, I would like to see smoking prohibited in downtown bus shelters, because bus shelters exist to shelter people. And if I need shelter from the hot sun or from the winter cold while waiting for a bus downtown, not on the OSU campus, but in downtown Stillwater, I don't want to take shelter in a bus shelter only to have someone force me to breathe poisoned air. Thanks very much.
Our next request is from Thad Lefingwell.
Good evening. I'm Thad Lefingwell from 30 Yellow Brick Drive here in Stillwater. I am a clinical health psychologist here at OSU. What that means is I study the habits that are killing us: smoking, drinking, lack of activity. I'm here tonight, though, speaking primarily as a father of three young kids in a citizen of Stillwater, and I'm also speaking in support of the proposed resolution to ban tobacco use in public parks. I also would agree. I would encourage you to be bold and go as far as possible. I would offer you the perspective that tobacco use is a developmental disorder. Tobacco use is adopted by young people, not by adults. If we can get young people through adolescence and very early adulthood without smoking, they are very unlikely to become smokers. This ordinance or resolution would help in two ways. It would reduce the modeling of smoking behavior in our public spaces. It would also send an important message to our young people about the community standards, about the dangers of smoking, and I would encourage you to do so. I'm also a golfer, and I'll comment on that really quickly. I saw at the last meeting there was some conversation about perhaps public golf courses should be excluded, and I would discourage you from thinking along those lines. Golf courses are the only public spaces I know of where you can actually be literally paired with people to spend the next four or five hours together, paired with strangers who may choose to engage in behaviors that would make your experience less pleasant. That's why we ban lots of behaviors at golf courses. In fact, we even regulate dress, as well as behavior like crude language or misuse of alcohol in golf courses. I would encourage you the same. Golf courses are, despite their expanse, are probably the more intimate settings where citizens come together to engage in activities, and for that reason, I would encourage you to include golf courses as well. Thank you.
The next request is from Gladine Allred.
I'm Gladine Allred from 2026 South Iba. I am a member of the Stillwater Wellness Coalition, and having a smoke-free communities is one topic we have discussed. And I would like to praise the city council for looking at the option of having outdoor areas in the city park system smoke-free. But expanding this, I, there are many reasons to have a smoke-free community. One, there's overwhelming scientific evidence that improving the physical health of workers results in better fiscal health for employers. And a growing number of Oklahoma communities and local chambers of commerce view increased economic development through the creation of a healthier workforce as a vital component to their survival and competitive growth. Second, smoke-free communities can improve the citizens' quality of life, whether they're enjoying an outing in the park or on the job. Reducing tobacco use among workers generates financial returns from reduced healthcare costs, increased on-the-job productivity, reduced health and life insurance costs, and reduced absenteeism. Smokers, on the average, miss over 50% more days of work due to sickness compared with non-smokers. I know this is expanding beyond what you're proposing. So, in addition to improving our physical health and quality of life, being smoke-free can improve our economic health as well. Regarding the ability of Oklahoma cities and towns to compete for convention and tourism business, many travelers are coming to expect smoke-free hospitality venues as the norm. Nearly two-thirds of Americans are now protected by smoke-free laws that include all restaurants and bars. To date, 25 national organizations have adapted policies to hold, to only hold meetings and conventions in smoke-free cities. So, I encourage the Stillwater City Council to pass this resolution and that you have as an ultimate goal for us to become a smoke-free community. Thank you.
Our next request is from Scott Lindner.
Hello. I'm Scott Lindner from 1105 West Stonecrest Avenue here in Stillwater. I represent OSU Prevention Programs. We have three different grants that work on different prevention strategies, and one of those is tobacco through the Tobacco Settlement Endowment Trust. I think Becky Taylor's been here and presented before, but she is unable to make it, as were some of our coalition chairs and coalition members, as they are at a national conference right now. But I wanted to talk on behalf of the Payne County Live Well Coalition and say that our coalition fully supports as extensive of policy as possible in regards to tobacco, and that they would fully support a resolution and would even go as far as to support an ordinance. Personally, just speaking on behalf of myself rather than the organization I work for, I play softball, and out there we have people that smoke pretty consistently, as well as dip. And I think it sets a great role model for kids, because they're all over the place out there, for them not to be exposed to others dipping and doing other forms of tobacco. As for the tobacco smoking, a lot of people do smoke out there, and I don't know if a resolution would necessarily be extensive enough to prevent things like that. It just depends how much teeth, I guess, you could have with the resolution to actually enforce it. And it also has shown statewide to, as well as national, nationally, to be more effective to have ordinance where you have actual teeth and to go the full steps to have a full policy. And as for e-cigarettes, you simply just don't know what's in them at this point, so we don't know how harmful they are or to what extent. We know that there are chemical compounds coming off of those, but we really don't know how extensive those are. So, I would encourage it to include that as well. Thank you.
Our next request is David Mizell.
Hi, my name is David Mizell. I live at 227 Southwest Street here in Stillwater. And I'd just like to read this real quick to you. One of the major health concerns caused by smoking, and therefore secondhand smoke, as well, is heart disease. The American Heart Association reports that 440,000 of the 204 million heart-related deaths each year are directly related to smoking. That's almost half a million deaths a year. Secondhand smoke exposure can increase the chance of heart problems up to 30% for those who don't smoke. Do public smoking bans, do public smoking bans improve this problem? A look at smoking ban statistics in the USA shows that the answer can be yes. Pueblo, Colorado instituted a public smoking ban in 2003. The number of heart attacks in Pueblo has dropped by 41% from the 18 months prior to the ban to the 18 months just after the ban. And this is according to the Centers for Disease Control. So, these are actual results from a public smoking ban. On a personal note, I frequent the dog parks and the public parks here quite often, and secondhand smoke is just an absolute nuisance to me, to my friends. I would like to have the freedom to breathe clean air in public spaces. So, I'm asking that we send the right message that toxic pollution and litter in our public areas is unacceptable. Thank you.
And our last request is Paula Brown.
Hi, Paula Brown at 232 South Hartford Street. Thank you to each of you for hearing this proposal, and hopefully it will pass. I'm going to speak more from the heart, not from a statistics standpoint, because I'm not an expert in that. So, I just wanted to say, as a child growing up, both of my parents smoked, and in the car, I felt trapped on the way to church because they were smoking. And I really believe that my immune system was compromised. I'm sick often, and I think a lot of that is, I have severe allergies. I think a lot of that was from the secondhand smoke. I don't have proof of that, but, and granted, that was in a car, but I feel the same way when I'm outdoors at a park or at a public setting. I like to be able to be outdoors and breathe clean air. And that's the main thing I would like to give you, is I'd like to breathe clean air. So, when I'm walking downtown Stillwater, or if I'm at a park, I want my air to be clean. And I, with the parks and the kids playing and softball, baseball, whatever, there was a sign I saw, not in Stillwater, but I thought it made the point clearly for what I'm trying to say, for kids to not have to breathe that either. And the sign said, "Healthy Lungs at Play," and I think that speaks loudly, "Healthy Lungs at Play." So, that's a good way to get that message across to parents who might want to light up while they're out there at the park. And I hope that, I hope that this helps in bringing Stillwater to a better quality of life. And thanks again.
That's going to take us down to public hearings, and there was a request to postpone the public hearings cut for this evening, between a motion to postpone?
Yes, sir.
And what was the date that it wished to be postponed?
December 1st.
December 1st. Is there a motion to postpone this public hearing to December 1st?
Motion to postpone this to December 1st.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll that screen. Five oh. That is approved, five to zero. That's going to take us down to general orders. And just quick background, earlier this year, city council, we reorganized ourselves for our, used to be ad hoc committees. We restructured ourselves into several standing committees. That way, at least, now, open meeting laws require that if there are ever three councilors together working, that it has to be a posted meeting. Two councilors can get together to work on projects. And so, we structured ourselves, creating different committees to be working on different types of projects. And so, tonight, we're going to be getting updates from the Infrastructure Committee and the Quality of Life Committee. Council Darlington?
Yes. Go.
I think that's a go.
Okay. Infrastructure first. Counselor Weaver and I are on the Infrastructure Committee, and we met with city manager Dan Galloway and Dan Blankenship in late September to discuss, to review the master plans, which already exist for areas related to the infrastructure in the city. That's a whole bunch of things. That is really a lot of things. We talked about entities which did not have master plans and discussed the follow-up that we hoped would come. And we requested, we requested some follow-up. And then we talked about, you know, do we, you know, do we want to read every master plan when we first come on the council? Not necessarily, but we do want them to be usable, accessible, accountable, and that have a specific schedule of review that we can count on. So, that was master plans, and we will continue to follow up with Mr. Galloway on that. Any questions about infrastructure? Joe, would you like to add anything?
No, that's it.
Number two, Quality of Life Committee. This is Counselor Nahara and I. So, please jump in here with anything. We have been meeting for quite a long time, because this is a brand-new committee, and that's pretty exciting. I'm not sure if the mayor assigned the two newest councilors to this committee because it was the newest committee, or just because he thought, well, we'll just throw them in and see what they can do.
There's a lot of yes in that.
Okay. We have, Mr. McLennie is our staff liaison person, and we, I have to say, we have had a great time, meeting together, talking about just what this could be about. And we have talked a lot about what quality of life really is. And it's kind of an overused term, so we're, we kind of, you know, we're just going with that name for the heck of it now. But we like to think about, we would really like to have the council agree on the definition of what, what the work of the city is. And to make it be, you know, it doesn't have to be a law or something, but just something out loud that says that we are about healthy infrastructure, sound financial practices. None of these are going to drop anybody off their chair. They're just really straightforward. Use of land and resources in the context of sustainability and growth, safe and healthy environment for all citizens, strong neighborhoods, vital downtown, and economic development in support of all of the above. Having us all agree gives, sends a message to the staff and puts us all on the same page. We know that the quality of life in any city is, well, it's, it's, it's like a body. You know, you have to have good bones. You have to have good, good structure. We have to have good streets. We know that. That is the first thing. But we also have to have a heart and a spirit, and that comes through good relationships. Good relationships among city councilor members, good relationships between city council members and city staff, and particularly good relationships with the citizens who have put us in this place. So, that is going to be our focus. We'll come with some ideas related to each of those seven points that I named, and hopefully move on from there. See exciting things from us.
I appreciate that. It's pretty impressive. Any, now, did she do this, or did you do this?
No, she didn't. She's much better at articulating things. She's, John and I just kind of throw out ideas, and Pat writes them down and makes them sound good. No offense, Sean.
No, it's been a great fun to work with each of these men.
Good. I like the directions that you're taking, that both those committees are taking on those items, and I think that's exactly why we structured the committees like we did, so that people can be working on different things. So, I didn't get written reports in in time, but the committees that I've been working on are not really those type of grab this big ball and try and work it out. Mine are much more the meet with others and keep the relationships going. I'm on the Payne County Liaison at Payne County, and I've attended several of the county commission meetings. Actually, quite impressively, Commissioner Chris Ruddy got something accomplished that I've been wanting to do for the last several years, which is create a, an ongoing meeting between the mayors of Payne County. And so, we've met once, just again, know each other, meet each other, try, what can we be working together on, what is common, what is not. And we've had one meeting, I think it's gone very well, and that's going to continue. And it's probably better that it's Commissioner Ruddy, and that's kind of spearheading that, because it does come from an outside source, and it's not that Stillwater group that's trying to figure, you know, figure out what everyone else is doing. It's very much the county bringing everyone together, so I appreciate that. Counselor Noble and I work with Stillwater Public Schools, and we've had our quarterly meeting with them, and I think that meeting went well, good conversation, nothing real groundbreaking coming out of it, just great relationships moving forward. So, and CEDAC is the other committee that I work on, Economic, Stillwater Economic Development Advisory Council, and that is the partnership between OSU, City of Stillwater, Chamber of Commerce, and Stillwater Industrial Foundation. And our main focus over the last quarter has been on our branding initiative, and so I'll do much more of that coming by first quarter of 2015. Do you know the committees that have reports?
John, you're on lots of committees.
It's pretty balanced.
Land use?
Oh, land use. We've kind of taken a timeout, because we were really going nuts. Land Development Code Committee is one that Counselor Darlington and I serve on, and we were hot and heavy there for about six months, and have kind of taken a timeout while other things have got our attention. But we've got several things on that agenda that we'll be digging into, and those will be rolling into council by again first quarter of '15. So, anything to add on that one?
No, but I just think it's important for everyone to recognize that, you know, the 50 minutes or hour and a half that they see us every other week is not the only work that gets done.
Very true.
And particularly Mayor Bartlet.
Very true, very true. All right. All right. You guys got anything on any other committees that I left off, or to add that I talked about?
Miguel and I are on SGA, and I see some of the SGA people. We meet with them when they need us to meet with them. We met with them once this year, and I've met with a couple of them this year when they need to come to my office. So, we're in touch with them, and we're there for them. And I think the branding, I'm on the branding with CEDAC with you, Mayor, and that will be interesting and fun to present when, when we know a little bit more, when we can present more. So, I think there's good things to come.
What I appreciate, this, this year's group from SGA, I think, is approaching this with a, I was the liaison to SGA for two years, and I think I talked to someone twice. And it very much was not a, come on, we're in this together, and how can we help each other, which is what I'm hearing from you. And I know you guys have been attending, this is several meetings. I start to recognize people, and you guys, I'm recognizing you. So, that's really good. I appreciate that. And one of the things that we've talked about, it seems like just about every big conversation we have, one of the five of us before the conversation is over brings up, well, we've got 25,000 people, where's our connection? Where's the conversation and the voice? And I think this is another great way to make sure that voice is heard. Anything else on the committee reports? All right. I appreciate it, guys. Okay, Dr. Peak, you're up. We're going to talk about a possible traffic roundabout here in Stillwater.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Council. We're talking tonight about the intersection of 10th and Main Street. Got a little graphic here that we're going to pull up. And early last year, we were asked basically to study this intersection, to kind of orient you. This is looking north in towards downtown, south, so this is Main Street, and then 10th Avenue right across here. And of course, today, this intersection currently doesn't have a traffic signal or a traffic light. The traffic running north-south moves freely, and folks crossing from east to west have to stop. In engineering, we have several warrants that we look at for the installation of traffic signal. And the reason for that is we try to standardize where and when traffic signals are installed, because, A, they're expensive. You can talk $50,000 to $100,000 for the intersection, or installation of one signal, depending on the number of lanes and approaches. But they also increase risk for certain types of conflicts and accidents that may not be present at an intersection without traffic control, i.e. you think of someone running a red light, or now you have a signalized pedestrian crossing, and right turns may, things that can make the right on red hit pedestrians. So, all those types of things we look at. And then volume, of course, is one of the main ones. So, this intersection does not meet any of the warrants for a traffic signal. And as our staff studied this, the primary issue that exists out there is the traffic crossing east to west on 10th Avenue does not have good line of sight to make that crossing. These lines right here are basically drivers that stop at the stop bar. This is their view. And in this aerial, you can see all the parking is vacant when the aerial was taken, but when that parking is full, a driver approaching and trying to cross to the west literally needs to pull all the way up and out into the intersection to see the oncoming traffic.
Or a pedestrian.
Or a pedestrian. But pedestrians have a little bit better line of sight, and they move differently, but the parking does obscure them for vehicles moving north and south. So, kind of with that is the issue you identified. Staff worked on a couple of different alternatives, and the one that was selected was to put in what is called a mini roundabout. This was presented to the bid board back in October. And so, what this basically does is puts a fixed object, which is this thing in orange here, as well as a larger circle, but this is a traversable. Mini roundabout basically means that you recognize larger vehicles may need to drive over this surface to make a turning movement, i.e. you think homecoming parades, okay? If we have floats and trailers that are moving through here, they may not be able to make this turning movement very easily. So, a mini roundabout leaves this at a lower elevation than So, mini roundabout leaves this at a lower elevation than the vehicle moving slowly could actually traverse. The benefits of this is, one, traffic is not stopped basically in any direction, so the north-south still continues to move freely, but the geometry of it slows speeds to about 10 to 15 miles an hour, basically for them to yield and enter, and then if they were going to the west, they would circulate that way. Traffic coming south to east would go around that way, and if you were crossing, same kind of thing. So, it slows traffic down to a scale that is easier to be present, to see pedestrians, such as Council Weaver pointed out, as well as it provides the benefit of these areas in green, or what we're calling islands, they could be landscaped as well, but a pedestrian would only have to look and cross one lane of traffic. Then they could rest at this location, make sure nothing else is coming, and continue crossing. On the 10th Avenue side, we don't have the room for the medians, but it is significantly less of a crossing distance that's out there today, as well as all of this presents a more open sightline. To give another perspective on this, Tom Coots in the planning department actually did a sketch-up model, so we're going to take a drive through 10th and Main virtually for you. So, we're coming down, basically, this is looking northbound. If you were a vehicle approaching, I'll pause it right there. This is, the area brown would be kind of that traversable surface, so most vehicles would not go over that, but if we had a delivery truck that needed a little more turning room, they would be able to travel on that surface, as well as these edge lines. We do realize that the businesses to the east there do take deliveries from larger trucks, so you want to be able to accommodate that. But you can also see the scale of this intersection gets a lot more tight, it provides opportunities for landscaping and enhancements throughout there, and creates a more pedestrian-oriented type environment compared to what's out there today. The other thing that this intersection does is it fits pretty much within the existing intersection that we have out there today. And if you think about the traffic coming south on Main Street, you really have three lanes of traffic wide, and it's even wider than that. The same thing on the east and the west leg, we have a pretty significant width. So, all we're doing is kind of keeping that radius, we're pushing the sidewalk further into the existing street, so we're basically building within that footprint. Now, we are proposing changes to some of the parking. I went and met with the gentleman of Greenies to talk about, thanks. Sorry about that. That's pretty funny. But about parking, and, you know, there was some concern about the impacts to parking near the intersection, and primarily, what we're trying to do is eliminate the angled parking where vehicles would be entering or exiting to reduce that kind of conflict. So, we came up with an idea to create some, this could be designated as accessible spaces, so you could basically come in, pull in, and pull out, not make a angled parking, parallel parking type maneuver, or it could be a drop-off in the loading zone, if you didn't want to make it just an accessible space. And so, it will remove some of the existing on-street parking. Given the low volumes we have and the width that we have over here on the east and the west side, we can change the angle of the existing parking, and actually increase overall parking in this area by three additional spaces for this project. So, we don't lose spaces, we're just kind of shifting those around. The other thing is, if this proposal is okay with city council, our intent would be to construct it with city forces, which puts the materials cost at about $65,000 for the, what I call the skeleton improvements, getting the street, the curbs, the radius, not all the enhancements, but just making it ready for whatever type of streetscape you want. We could accomplish that for about $65,000. With that, I'll throw it out for.
I think the, just from based on what you said, could you leave the picture up?
Do you want the image?
That's fine. Either one is fine. The medians are critical for the pedestrian thoroughfare, because there is nothing that I can see that's going to stop the traffic or signal the traffic for the pedestrians, right? The pedestrians are going to have to watch for traffic and move when it's clear.
Yes, sir. It works both ways. Traffic does not stop, so it's not like a signal. The driver behavior changes, so there will be some yielding to pedestrians that likely occurs, because you're bringing that vehicle speed down.
We hope. That's the plan.
Right.
But my point is, the median has to be there in order to make this effective, otherwise, to me, it's really not a safe intersection for pedestrians. But I don't think, I don't know that there's that much of pedestrians.
There's no signalization now.
I know.
Yeah, they're crossing four lanes with nothing.
Coming east-west.
Yeah.
The other thing that the median...
Well, the alternative is it's a signal, like as he said.
Right. I'm following you.
The other thing is, the median is actually also necessary to get vehicles to be in the proper position to enter the roundabout, otherwise, without that, people that aren't familiar come up here, and you get people that basically, okay, they stop, treat it as a stop-controlled intersection, and they turn, and then possibly be in conflict with vehicles entering, so.
In my view, it's a perfect place to try this, if you wanted to try something, because it's a two-lane and the...
That leads right to my question, which is, what kind of signage is, do you believe is going to be necessary to teach Oklahomans how to use a roundabout?
So, a couple of things is working with marketing to do a lot of PR about this thing going in. There are numerous YouTube videos that are out there, free, to talk about how you drive a roundabout. I mean, so, having a public engagement campaign is a critical part to making this thing successful. The signage, the research out there, there's a lot of differences about how much signage is enough and how much is too much, and so, we're going to try and stay with the minimum that's needed, as opposed to being overkill and having people trying to figure out what all the signs mean. The intent's trying to get this design right, so that as drivers approach it, it's intuitive to what they do.
We're really, really hopeful. I mean, we didn't just throw this out, there's been a lot of research going into this, and we've looked at it, but, and Jason, you can probably, you know, bear this out, that in most places where these have been tried, you actually reduce, you improve drive time slightly, you decrease the number of traffic accidents, and you increase pedestrian safety. So, when you can, you can have a smoother traffic flow, fewer automobile accidents, and fewer accidents involving pedestrians, that's a win-win situation. So, we're really hoping it proves out to do that here, but it has, most places where it's been tried, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
We had a traffic signal placed at that intersection, I vaguely remember.
It was before my time, in the five years I've been here, there's not been a traffic signal down there.
But there was. Well, it's been a while, so, you know, this might be worth trying, as opposed to putting one back. I don't know.
Have we had a lot of accidents? Have we had a lot of problems with traffic speed?
We only had, we looked at the three-year accident history out there. We had one accident that would have been correctable by either a four-way stop or a traffic signal. So, the frequency of accidents to the volume is not high out there. I think there's definitely a lot of uncomfortable drivers that may be making that east-west movement during certain times of day, because, you know, you really do have to encroach all the way out into the intersection just to enter it from.
One of the, one of the things that we've had a lot of concern about in the business, I mean, with the, with the bid district and the growth of business, we're getting more and more development in that area, more and more pedestrian traffic, because we've got more and more customers downtown, and so I think the biggest concern was pedestrian safety. When you go back about seven years ago, there was a traffic signal there, it became obsolete and was bad shape, and we took it out. Did the traffic, and this is before Dr. Peak came, and again, the traffic didn't warrant putting the light back. We've tried four-way stop signs because of the pedestrian issue. That did not work real well, because the, there's more north-south traffic than there is cross-traffic, and so it was an imbalance with the four-way stop sign. So, the issues are still there, we have a lot of pedestrian crossings, and yet, we don't have traffic situations to warrant signals or four-way stop, it creates other problems, so this appeared to be a nice approach to both issues, and hopefully, give pedestrians a little more assurance, a little more safety in crossing as well, so.
Well, I also think it, it makes it, it improves the look.
Could be very attractive. We, yeah, that's one thing we want to do, if we're going to do this, when you do it right, yeah.
That's one of the things we heard from the bid board, was this was, they saw it as an opportunity to create a gateway into downtown from kind of the southern end that's not there today.
I had two questions. One, the orange, I know the outer circle is slightly raised, but can be driven over, is the middle part a pedestal, or is it just an orange dot?
We're engineers, we just put a cylinder.
That's still under discussion.
Okay.
We'd like for something to be attractive and very artistic. Plus, it could possibly even be a water feature, as a fountain, or it could be some kind of an art statue or something.
If there was something there, it would also create that, oh, I've got to do something, except just drive through this intersection, yeah.
And I think we'll get, we want, you know, it creates that, but as far as the artistic look, we'll want to work with the bid board downtown and get some ideas from them as well. Make sure that its design is consistent with the other themes that are being carried through the bid district, so.
I'll say it for Jason, water and roads don't go together real well. I guess if it's done carefully.
It depends, yeah, you shut it off in the wintertime when it's cold, you know.
Our idea was just, I mean, we put the cylinder there, I mean, it could be something public car, it could be really whatever the community wants it to be, but that area would be a physical barrier that someone couldn't drive across. And we can set it up so that, you know, if that decision comes later down the road of what it needs to be, it can be put in at that.
My other comment was, when I first saw the picture, Jason, and I saw the medians curved, I thought this was going to be like a protected intersection for bicyclists, and it's not. But, and, how does, how does this design affect bicycle riders?
So, the key for this in design, and it's the same thing about pedestrians, it's slowing traffic down to about 15 miles an hour with the design. I mean, that's the speed people will be comfortable, there are people that will try to drive it faster. I mean, you know, that's just the law of the population that exists. So, you know, bicycling speeds, I mean, you're talking eight to 10 miles an hour typically for most people that are riding in the streets, that are riding approximately in the same speed with traffic. So, you typically don't create a separate facility for them within the roundabout. Now, larger designs out, you know, on larger roads, sometimes they have what are called slip ramps and things for cyclists to kind of divert if they're not comfortable going through the roundabout, but in this case, it's a mini roundabout, and most of the cyclists today are riding those same streets.
I think it's exciting, though, to think about, besides pedestrians and people in car, people on bikes, and as we do redesign intersections, to always have that in mind also.
Yes, yes.
And I know you do.
Let's jump.
Well, the credit for this design goes to Michael Stevenson and our engineering staff. He's the one that put the labor, and then Charlotte Lovren did all the research work and get it there, so the credit really goes to those two individuals.
And Mr. Coots is driving down the street.
And the sketch-up. Tom has a great, great way of making it, so everybody can understand it.
Thank you.
So, in result, this project is going to make the intersection safer, correct? And, you know, we accomplish it more attractive.
Less expensive than a light.
Less expensive than a light, more effective and more efficient than four-way stop, two-way stop, bunch of yield signs.
Even in traffic, I mean, the operations are continuous, the volumes out there are, you know, what we call level of service or delay, this works really well for traffic operations, safer, provides opportunity for enhancements, landscaping, streetscaping. I think it's a good, solid project.
We normally, normally have our transportation department, you know, designed and make minor changes to intersections all over the community, to improve them, but this one being rather unique, we talked about it, and I did want to bring this public, bring it before the city council, and again, it's something we can accomplish, it doesn't require any major actions on the council, but we certainly wanted to make certain that everyone's aware, and if anyone has some major problem, we can certainly revisit the issue, but our intent is to proceed with the project and kind of ask for council's blessing on that.
From all the nods, I think you're blessed.
Good enough for me.
And by kind of my last question, I can't remember exactly how you said it or what you said, but in your professional traffic opinion, are there other intersections in our community that roundabouts could make improvements? And I'm not asking for examples, I'm just, if this works, are there other places where this could make life better?
Yes.
Okay.
Lots, lots.
Well, let's learn how to, you learn how these things work in a, far from a crazy intersection, but anyway. All right. Any other questions from council?
When might this be done?
So, if council's approval, we would look to get construction started in January and have it completed by the spring.
You don't need anything official.
Nope, we're ready to go.
I like it. Thank you.
We're waiting on you.
Yeah.
Always.
Ball's in your court.
Yeah, all those red lights.
Thank you, Dr. Peak, appreciate that.
Okay.
Yeah, we didn't, didn't get into the details, but Dr. Peak has done a lot of research on this, and I don't remember all the details, but we've looked at all the Big 12 school cities, and we're one of the few that doesn't use roundabouts as yet. The other, Norman doesn't either yet, but Oklahoma's, but they have really shown to improve traffic flow around some campuses in communities with campuses like ours, and also reduce some traffic accidents and problems, so we're hoping they bear out here, and we'll try them one at a time.
Okay. Okay, that's going to take us down to item C under General Orders, which is the discussion of proposed ordinance or resolution. Mr. Dorman, you've done some research for us.
Yes.
Please bring us up to speed on what the state of affairs are, what can cities do, what can cities do. Explain to us what our legal options are.
Okay, the state of Oklahoma basically has two ways in which it regulates smoking. One way is through a criminal statute that's found entitled 21 of Oklahoma statutes, section, I have to find my section number here all of a sudden, 1247, and then, secondly, in title 63 in the health code, there are a number of provisions, and I believe there's an act called the Prevention of Smoking Act, or something to that effect. Both of these statutes have provisions that basically outlaw smoking in public buildings. And by public buildings, that's interpreted very broadly to mean basically things like restaurants, offices, and of course, public buildings like this building here, university buildings, so it's very broad in its scope. 1247 in particular has some additional provisions, one of them that basically mandates that all state buildings are smoke-free, a second provision that allows counties and cities to declare their buildings and properties smoke-free, and then the third provision, subsection, I believe it's 1247D, which gives the regents for higher education and educational institutions the authority to not only declare the buildings smoke-free, but they can also declare them tobacco-free. And that is the only place where tobacco, smokeless tobacco is mentioned in any of the statutes, except for 63, with again, another reference to educational purposes, educational buildings. There's a number of exceptions, I won't go down the long list, but basically, private offices and things like that are accepted out, but in the end, the state has basically acknowledged its, or not even say acknowledged, but indicated its desire that it be the Or not even say acknowledged, but indicated its desire that it be the sole authority in this regard. And so, through a section in chapter... Or section 23... 63, rather, there is a preemption that basically preempts cities and counties and other entities from enacting ordinances that are more stringent than what the state statutes say. So, with that in mind, I sent out to you three examples of what we possibly could do. Two of them are ordinances that deal with smoking in public parks, which was what I was originally tasked with. And then a third item, which is a resolution which deals with tobacco use in general. And so, it would actually be broader in scope than what the ordinances would allow, but in that it would also take care of chewing tobacco and things of that nature, but it would not have the full force and effective law as would be the case with an ordinance. So, that's kind of where I am right now.
Big chief, red crayon. Explanation of preemption, please.
The state of Oklahoma has the power to pass statutes. That's the legislature's basic job. And when the legislature decides that there is an issue of what they call statewide concern, someplace where there is a need for there to be uniformity in every city, every town, every county, in how a law is written and how it is enforced, then the state can by legislative means say, we are preempting this field. And when they preempt the field, they basically tell the local communities, you can pass ordinances in this area, but you can't pass ordinances that are more stringent than what we say you can do. And so, that in a nutshell is what it is. And effectively, the state has occupied the field there. And there are instances where preemption occurs. Health codes tend to be state preemption. The gun laws are basically preempted. There are very few things that we can do with guns right now. These tobacco regulations, because of the regulation of private businesses and so forth in the state statutes, it was necessarily that those be uniformly applied. So, there's a preemption there. And of course, traffic laws. And traffic laws are... You can't have traffic laws that are more stringent in one city than in another. And a great example is the seatbelt laws. A few years ago, when the legislature passed a law to require people to wear their seatbelt, the law only applied to cars. Well, the city of Tulsa, the city council looked at that, and they said, well, that's not... Doesn't really work around here because half of the vehicles on the road are pickups and vans. So, Tulsa passed an ordinance that included pickups and vans. Well, the first prosecution under that case went all the way to the Court of Criminal Appeals, and the Court of Criminal Appeals said, sorry, state's occupied the field. They preempted you. You know, there's a need for statewide uniformity here. So, that's what we're talking about here. So, the state has decided that there's a need that these laws be fairly uniform in their scope. And so, the bottom line, the big red crayon, as you say, is you're very limited in what you can do by the statute.
So, we couldn't do an ordinance on texting while you're driving if the state didn't have something already in place?
That's correct.
Which I'd like to do.
Okay. So, state law... From my reading of the ordinances that you sent out and the resolution that you sent out, the resolution is broader in types of tobacco and in geographic scope. Is that a fair interpretation?
Yes, sir. It mirrors the Oklahoma City resolution that I spoke of at the last meeting.
And they've had that in place a couple of years?
2011. It actually was put into place before the property exemption or a property provision was added to the state code. But there were two reasons that they did it. One was because of the property, when the other one was because of they wanted to be broader and include all forms of tobacco, and that wasn't available under the state statute, as is still the case right now.
And universities can be stricter. That's what you're saying. They can be more...
Yes.
They can be stricter than cities can be.
Right. Because the regents aren't a legislative body, but they do have the power to enact things that are the equivalent of workplace rules. And so, students being a particular class of individuals who can be regulated in a particular way because they are part of an institution, you can have... They can make rules for the students. They can make rules for the employees. And so, that's kind of where that comes from. And it's also the case with other universities, and there's even a special provision in there for public schools. So, the schools can also be fairly broad in their application.
Councilor Noble, we ran right up against that, and I wish you had a lot to do with those laws getting put in place at the higher regents level because we found ourselves in a difficulty as we are now. So, that's why those laws got passed.
Right. So, for some cities, when we have people asking us, well, can't you do what this city did? It may be difficult for us to do it if the city went further than what the state statute says it can.
They're taking a risk, a significant legal risk. And I did speak to...
A legal risk.
Yes. And I've spoken to the city attorneys in some of those cities, and in all candor, I didn't get an answer that proved to be very satisfactory.
A costly legal.
It could be. You know, if you think about the cost of defending lawsuits, and if you enact an ordinance that is broader than you have authority to enact.
I like the idea of the resolution being able to be tobacco-free over above smoke-free. I like it as an aspirational statement as opposed to punitive or even regulatory. And I do like it as a first kind of step, and we can hopefully evaluate it over time. I did call a number of people in Oklahoma City to see what their reactions, people in their park system and their planning. I actually probably went from Ken to Connie to David, but they kept forwarding me on because... But they were... The interesting thing, they thought the most effective piece of this was the signage that they were then allowed to put in the parks, and they were most pleased with the way they did that was having a contest for people to... For citizens to design the signs that would be placed at the parks, and that brought a lot of attention to... A lot of positive attention and participation in the resolution. So, I thought that was an interesting piece.
One interesting aspect, a lot of our park space, especially the park space that is utilized in organized manners, we actually have under some public-private partnership agreements. In our ball field... Ball fields with Sasa Lake McMurtry, with Friends of McMurtry. How does this resolution impact our agreements with those groups?
Unless their agreement is inconsistent with your, say, the resolution, it won't impact them at all. They do have rules with regard to participation in some of the leagues. I know that from experience that some of the baseball leagues had anti-tobacco rules as part of participation requirements, and that would not impact them in the least. In fact, they would still be free to do that because that would be consistent with the resolution if that's the way you choose to go.
Okay. I agree with Councilor Darlington on the tobacco-free being a better statement than
I like the idea of a resolution on the fact of that, before we start saying, you know, we're going to give you a ticket if you smoke, we can see how many people will actually participate in something like this. Because at the end of the day, if we pass an ordinance, there's not going to be a cop sitting at every single park 24 hours a day. So, the likelihood of us getting someone to actually get a ticket is going to be very small. And so, with a resolution, we can actually just say, hey, you know, this is what we're doing. This is our policy. We would like you to follow along with this, and we're going to get a good majority. I think Oklahoma City has... I don't know if they said how they've done, but I really feel like we're going to get the people to follow those rules that are going to be the same people that would follow an ordinance. The people that are going to neglect to follow an ordinance are going to neglect to follow a resolution. And so, I feel like we're getting more with this, and we're doing it in a better approach.
I agree with everybody that came up here and spoke tonight. I don't like to see litter in the parks. I don't like to see cigarette butts, and it's disgusting to see it in the parks. And I don't want our kids around it, and I don't want to be around it. My son grew up in the ballparks, too, so anybody that exercises and runs around Boomer Lake doesn't want to go through a cloud of smoke. I get it. I think we all get it. We all get it. One of the things that I thought about is, as an ordinance, how do you enforce that? Do you pull a cop off the street when we only have maybe four cops at any one time? How do you do that? So, I think this is a really good first step. I think this resolution that is a good first step. I don't know where we'll go in the future, but it's a good first step, and it covers more than just smoking. And let's just see what we can do, but it covers more. And I think with signage, let's just see what we can do. And it's a good first step and a good measure, and I appreciate everybody that came up here and said something.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to thank Councilor Nair for putting this item on our agenda and doing the legwork to get us to this point. He took the leadership on it. And, you know, I know we've had a lot of speakers trying to encourage us to take action, but the truth is, the council took this on itself with his leadership. So, thank you. Did a good job.
All right. The way we structured our agendas, and I guess, are there any other conversation, any other comments? And I'm going to ask a question again here in a minute, but are there any other comments?
I also want to thank the speakers, and I think one thing that was very... That stuck out in my head is that the majority of you said you would like an ordinance, but you would love to see something start. And, you know, and I think we're starting, we're getting something. We don't have anything now, and so, we're at least doing something. And so, I think if it's not what you want, you know, we're at least starting. And so, please take it for that, and please understand that we are a city of 50,000-plus, and we have to start somewhere, and we are doing what we feel is best.
Would just add that should you consider the resolution, it's more than just the signs. I mean, that... If there's a resolution, you've established policy, that would certainly give us the green flag to begin to put encouragements on our website and conversations about use of parking in other facilities, as well as other sources. So, we would use our different outlets as a means of education about this as well.
Now, the way the agenda is structured, it was structured to give the most flexibility for us to accomplish what we decided we wanted to accomplish. And so, there is a resolution on the agenda, or a potential resolution on the agenda, and there is a potential ordinance on the agenda. And so, it's one of those... Where we go next is we can pass one, the other, see what we want to do. So, but we've got pure flexibility, and that's why it was designed as it is, not to be confusing, not to appear like we're only doing one thing, but to give maximum flexibility after we had conversation tonight. So, does that make sense? Okay. All right. So, next on our agenda is the proposal of Resolution CC 2014-14. Any conversation on that, or does someone wish to make a motion on this resolution?
Most to approve Resolution Number CC 2014-14.
Second. Have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2014-14. And that is approved five to zero.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just, we shouldn't just sit back and hope that state government makes changes that would allow us to take other actions. If the council deems this important, we should consider talking to our local state officials about this. And I would encourage Mr. Galloway with the other municipalities to take this issue up, to give us the flexibility to take whatever action we deem appropriate. We shouldn't be limited by those actions. We did it at the university level. There's no reason why we can't do it at the city level.
That state preemption puts some serious handcuffs on individual communities from doing individual actions. There's no doubt about that.
We can also ask our citizens to get involved, to contact... You're our greatest resource, too.
Yeah, they've been very coordinated and had made a great impact, so carry on.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. It's going to take us down to ordinances, and on first reading, we have Ordinance 3285. Mr. Dorman.
An ordinance amending the Stillwater City Code by amending Chapter 2, Administration, Article 3, Authorities, Boards, Committees, Commissions, Trusts by repealing in its entirety Division 3, Stillwater Convention and Visitors, Board, Sections 2-169 through 2-174.
Move approval.
Second.
As a motion and a second. And this was based on entering the contract with Red Dirt DMO and then the recommendation from that entity on this ordinance, correct?
Yes, sir. And it'll read again on December 1st, and then it would go into effect on December 31st.
Awesome.
That would be the date, January 1st being the first date of the Red Dirt DMO agreement.
Can we just push yes twice and call it good?
If you'd like, sir.
All right. That is approved five to zero. And next on the agenda is Ordinance 3286, which was one of the ordinances that was sent out. Is this something council wants to take up or not?
No.
Okay. On second reading, we have Ordinance 3284. Mr. Dorman.
An ordinance amending the employee retirement system defined benefit plan for retirees only of the city of Stillwater, Oklahoma, to incorporate the definition of spouse providing for effective date, providing for reseverability, and declaring an emergency.
Okay. Any questions on this one?
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Has approved five to zero. And that's going to take us down... I was trying to pull up, and I apologize, the radio agenda, and I couldn't find it. All right. That's going to take us down to miscellaneous items. Mr. Dorman, you have anything for us?
Anything to report tonight, sir.
Okay. Mr. Galloway.
Just one quick item. I received a letter from Tom Williams. Tom wrote me the letter as Secretary of the Stillwater Community Foundation, reminding us that a couple of years ago, the foundation had started a bit of a fundraiser regarding possibly building a splash pad for the community. That... Their agenda's changed, but they did have $11,000 in donations toward that project, and they're offering those to the city. And if we would like to discuss splash pad further, my recommendation is that I intend to... We're starting budget discussions soon, and I would like to incorporate in the recommended budget that we'll be giving in the spring, some funds to put with this and possibly look at our first splash pad in the coming budget. We didn't have it budgeted this year, but I think this would give us time to do some planning. I'd like to... I intend to communicate back to Mr. Williams and tell him that we will consider this in the budget. And again, I'm not asking for a commitment to that, but to let you know that I do think it's something I'd like to recommend in the budget and ask you to be thinking about. I think during some earlier discussions in our budget last year, we discussed it, and we never made a conclusion, but I think there were several council members expressed interest in proceeding, and so, we'll give it a shot this year and see if we can get it done.
All right. Sounds good. Okay.
No, I like it. I get so many people... I mean, you know, I have a lot of young, young friends that have young children, and so splash pads are definitely a big hit. So, I like it.
Well, it's going to be interesting because one thing that I've learned, whenever you use the phrase splash pad, what you think that means is different than... use the phrase splash pad, what you think that means is different than what you think that means, which is different than what you think that means.
It's just a water hose, right?
And so defining what a splash pad is, is going to be an interesting part of the conversation, so. But I appreciate the community foundation's desire to help make improvements in our community and the work that they're doing, definitely. Okay. Councilors, you guys have anything?
No.
Sir.
Okay. Well, tomorrow morning, please tune in to seven eighty AM at eight fifteen. You can see, listen, see, you can listen to Councilor Nahara with Bill Van Ness tomorrow. Yes, that you.
Yes, at eight fifteen.
At eight fifteen. And then on Wednesday, I'll have my interview on Triple Play Radio from seven till eight. That'll be good. All right, anything for upcoming meetings? All right. That's going to take us down to appointments. And we do have, let me pull it up, Sister Cities has a vacancy. And I'm guessing from the notes, Patty, we failed to reappoint a group of people from last year. Okay, well, I'll, I'll take the heat for that one. So I apologize for that. There are three people that we failed to, that have served and are willing to serve again and have been doing a good job and that their terms expired in November of two thousand and thirteen. And then there are another three whose terms expire this month. And I would nominate, do I need to name their terms?
No.
Just say their names?
Say their names.
Okay. I would nominate Becky Erby, Nelda Helt, Larry Jones, John Mills, Cindy Petrie, and Carolyn Confer for reappointment to the Sister Cities Board. Is there a second?
Second.
And there's a second. We will vote on the reappointments. That is approved five to zero. And there is a vacancy on that board and Ms. Judy Nelson has submitted an application. And so I would nominate Judy Nelson to complete the term, the vacant term.
Second.
Nomination in the second. And that is approved five to zero. Thank you all. And thank you to Sister Cities. That is everything on our agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion and a second to adjourn. It's approved four to nothing.
Oh, Gina.
Five to nothing, we are adjourned.
Gina doesn't get to leave.